All right, the time is 4:31. We'll call to order the October 7th, 2019 Minneapolis Planning Commission hearing. I am Sam Rockwell. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Brown, Kogel Suesi, Luke Pier, Trader, and Olson. Our first order of business today is to approve the minutes of December and actions of the December 23rd, 2019 Minneapolis Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we do not have any -- the committee of the whole report out today, and so we'll move on to organizing our agenda for today's hearing. For those of you here in the audience, we're going to work through the agenda quickly right now. Please indicate if you wish to testify on an item, against an item, or to modify a staff recommendation on an item. Otherwise, you may testify on the consent agenda. All right, our first item is the Starbucks and Office Development at 4159 Hiawatha Avenue in Ward 12. We will be continuing that item to the October 21st, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. The second item is commemorative street name addition in Ward 8 of 3rd Avenue South, between 36th and 42nd Streets, east to Clarissa Walker Way. Anyone here to speak on that item? Are you here to speak in favor of that item?
Yes.
So we'll have you come up for our consent agenda testimony. Thank you. Our next item is item number three, commemorative street name addition, also in Ward 8 on 4th Avenue South, also between 36th Street East and 42nd Street East for Lana Newman Way. Is anyone here to testify against that item or to modify that? All right, we will place items number two and three on consent. Item number four is the Memoseta Housing Limited Partnership at 16 4th Street North in Ward 3. Site plan review. Is anybody here to testify on item number four? Seeing none, we'll place item number four on consent. Item number five is Home 2, 2800 University Avenue Southeast. Hotel rezoning, conditional use permit, and a variety of variances, and site plan review. Is anybody here to testify on item number five? Seeing none, we'll place item number five on the consent agenda. Item number six is the Yes Yoga at 101 26th Street East in Ward 10. Variance and site plan review. And I'll note for Commissioners, we have a supplementary memorandum adjusting site plan review to include suggestion of a mural as one of the alternatives for blank wall condition there. Is anyone here to speak on item number six? Seeing no one, we'll place item number six with the supplementary memorandum on consent. Item number seven is 233 Park Avenue, 700 South 3rd Street, and 240 Chicago Avenue in Ward 3. Conditional use permit and site plan review for that building to add a story. Is anybody here to speak on that item? Seeing no one, we'll add item number seven to the consent agenda. Item number eight is 3523 Lindale Avenue South in Ward 8. A variance in site plan review there. Is anybody here to speak on item number eight? Seeing no one, we'll place item number eight on consent. Item number nine is the Gateway Mixed-Use Development, 250 Nicollet Mall in Ward 3. Some amendments to the planned unit development there. Is anyone here to speak on item number nine? Seeing no one, we'll place item number nine on consent. Item number 10 is Portico, 4721 and 4737 Minnehaha Avenue in Ward 12. We will discuss item number 10. Item number 11 is the Jackson Lofts at 750 to 756 Jackson Street Northeast in Ward 3. We will continue item number 11 to the October 21st Planning Commission meeting. Item number 12 is the Fullerton Flats at 4736 and 4740 Grand Avenue South in Ward 11. We will discuss item number 12. Item number 13 is the freestanding solar energy system at 1600 Park Avenue in Ward 6. Conditional use permit and a couple of variances. Is anybody here to speak on item number 13? Seeing no one, we will place item number 13 on consent. And item number 14 is zoning code text amendment, which we will discuss. So our agenda is amended. We will discuss items 10, 12, and 14. On consent are items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 13, and we will continue items number 1 and 11 to the October 21st Planning Commission hearing. Commissioners, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right, next, could I have a motion to continue items number 1 and 11 to the October 21st Planning Commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next, I will open the public hearing on our consent agenda, and for those of you here to speak on the street renaming's, now's the time. Come on up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Mr. Chair. My name is Neva Walker. I am the proud seventh child of Clarissa Walker. I'm here quickly just to say, on behalf of my six living children of my mother, five who are over there, my nephew, it's a great honor and a privilege with giving thanks to Councilmember Jenkins for this honor and opportunity. For those that don't know, my mother set out 50 years ago to help create Sabatheny Community Center and develop it from the ground up, living across the street for 40 of those years. And so to be able to have our street be named after our mother is a great honor. Mary McLeod Bethune said, "Believe in yourself, learn, and never stop wanting to build a better world." My mother started 50 years ago with nothing, with only the desire to help build community. My nephew's wearing a shirt. You could call my mother on any day, and she would answer the phone saying, "How can I help?" Nothing wanting, not wanting anything from you, but trying to figure out how she can help you at any given time. And so it's a great honor, especially with the great opportunities that I've had in this city, to be able to lift up the woman that created my opportunity to have a legacy in the state of Minnesota. Without her, I would not be here. I would not have been able to be your first black elected official in the state of Minnesota. I would not have been able to move on to have great things. And so to honor Clarissa Rogers Walker isn't just to honor the street. It isn't just to honor Sabatheny. It is a great honor on the behalf of her children and her grandchildren who live and thrive every day and breathe her legacy in memory. And now the community will never forget what she was able to do in South Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Please get your name for the record.
My name is Tracy Williams-Dillard, and I'm the publisher of the Minnesota Spokesman Recorder Newspaper.
I'm Wallace Jackman. I was second publisher of the Spokesman Recorder.
And we're both here today, you know, in addition to Mrs. Walker's street being named in honor of her, my grandmother's name being honored in recognition of her, right on the same street that our building sits on, which is on 37th and 4th Avenue. So it's a great honor to be able to have Launa Q. Newman's name on that street where a lot of people who still may or may not be familiar with the paper now will know that name, and for those that are very familiar with the paper, have a lot of pride in the community having that name on 4th Avenue, because the building has been there for so long, means a lot to the family.
I don't know how many of you people know New Cecil E. Newman. Hubert Humphrey. I dropped my sucker. That's my new cigar. That's why. Cecil E. Newman and Hubert Humphrey were the best of friends. Hubert got to the White House and he calls Cecil every week. "How about this, Cecil? How about that? How about this?" He'd help him get through some of the issues. I know because I was there. But the disgrace is putting his name behind Walmart up on Lake Street, one block, new addresses. So this has to be, yes, about time. Thank you.
And so we're happy that this is taking place, and it gives a lot of legacy for the black community. Having two black women on each street in that neighborhood, it means a lot, so thank you.
It does.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chair Rockwell, my name is Andrea Jenkins. I'm the Councilmember for the 8th Ward in the City of Minneapolis, and it's really a great honor to stand before you as we contemplate these commemorative names. Just this past weekend, the documentary by PBS called "The Jim Crow of the North," which documented the history of redlining and discrimination and oppression that has been a part of our city's history and many, many other cities throughout the United States. The interesting aspect is that that documentary primarily took place right in this intersection. And so one of the things that we're trying to do is reclaim the history that 85 years ago brought the Minneapolis Spokesman Recorder, the longest-running community newspaper in the state of Minnesota, and 50 years ago, the Sabatheny Community Center, which serves over 47,000 families every year with their food shelf and other services that happen at the Sabatheny Community Center. So I'm really proud to stand here today and honor these two incredible women, Clarissa Rogers Walker and Launa O. Newman, and hope that you guys vote in affirmative today. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on these issues?
I'm here for something else. My name is Donna Nestie, and I've lived in the neighborhood for almost 30 years, and I worked at Mount Olive Lutheran Church for 30 years as a Neighborhood Ministries Coordinator. And I have to say, Clarissa was like a mentor to me, and when I started, there were times I didn't know what to do, but I'd send them to Clarissa, and she'd help them. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing on the consent agenda. Commissioners, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the street renaming's?
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to item number 10. Before we enter the public hearing, could I see, how many people are here to speak on item number 10? Couple people. How many here to speak on item number 12? Okay, okay, very good. Thank you. We'll reply. I want to make sure that everybody stays cognizant of everybody else's time, and so we stay efficient with our comments, but we'll play it by ears we got through. Peter, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Crandall, Senior Planner with CPED. Item number 10 before you tonight is located at 4721 and 4737 Minnehaha Avenue. This is two parcels, one of which contains an existing duplex, the other contains an existing auto-oriented use. One of the residential parcels is currently zoned R2B, and the auto use is currently zoned for the C1. The applicant is here today to propose a new four-story residential building on the two parcels, which would include rezoning both parcels to the OR2 Office Residence District. The proposed structure would be four stories in height with 26 dwelling units. Would also include 27 structured parking spaces and an underground garage, which is accessed via the residential alley at the rear of the site. The proposal includes several walk-up residential units along the Minnehaha elevation, as well as along the Nawataha Boulevard elevation. You'll notice that Nawataha Boulevard in this location is cul-de-sac, so it does not connect through to Minnehaha Avenue. The ground floor is principally made up of those residential units, again with those walk-up units fronting along the Minnehaha elevation and Nawataha elevations. The walk-up units incorporate some front patios, and the rear units also incorporate some ground-level patios. The project requires several land use applications. As I stated previously, rezoning both parcels from the R2B and C1 districts to the OR2 Office Residence District. A variance to the minimum established front yard along Minnehaha Avenue from 17 feet to 3 feet. That yard is established by the residential building to the north of the parcel, and should be noted that Minnehaha is actually a reverse corner on this parcel. The front yard is actually Nawataha Boulevard, as originally plotted on the lot, so the parcel actually has two front yards. There's a variance to reduce the minimum interior north yard from 11 feet to 5 feet for the building wall. A variance to reduce the minimum rear yard setback to allow patios that exceed the maximum size and required yard, and a variance to reduce the minimum established front yard along Nawataha Boulevard from 21 feet to 7 feet. Additionally, there's a variance of the rear yard requirement to allow a transformer in the rear yard, and then site plan review. You can see those variances denoted here on the site plan. I will note that the applicant has made some proposed modifications to their site plan that would reorient the driveway at the rear of the site, which you can see compared in these two site plans. So the second site plan shows that the driveway proposed modification would basically center out the proposed entry and exit to that underground garage, and that was in response to some Public Works feedback about circulation in the alley, and then that transformer would be moved to the other side of the proposed driveway for ease of access, but it still requires that rear yard variance. Staff is recommending approval of all of the applications, with the exception of one, which is the rear yard variance for the patios that exceed the maximum size. Basically, if any part of the patio encroaches on the rear yard requirement, it needs to be 50 feet, the entire patio needs to be 50 feet or less. So the applicant could pull the patios back into or beyond the required yard and keep them the same size if they modified the design. So we don't see a practical difficulty with complying with that, and staff's recommending denial of that one variance. But approval of all the others with some conditions of approval, one of which has to do with exterior materials. The applicant is proposing several primary exterior materials, including stucco brick, wood panel, and metal panel. Staff is recommending a condition that the applicant work with us post-approval to simplify the design, such that there are no more than three principal or primary materials per elevation, and then additionally that each elevation, or that the side and rear elevations resemble the front elevation and design, which is a site plan review standard. The applicant did make some proposed changes between the original submittal and today, including modifying the proposed rear stucco, such that it is white now instead of gray, so that it matches the front, which you can see here, and here as well. So that's moving towards compliance with that site plan review standard, but we feel like it could still be improved. I think I'll stop there. The applicant's here. If there are further questions about the design, and I can take any questions.
Commissioners, are there questions for staff? Commissioner, go ahead.
Just one question about where you see more than three materials, and could you give us a little more detail on that condition?
Sure, so on the front elevation, you'll see that there's a brick proposed on the south end of the four-story proportion, and then a white stucco proposed among those walk-up units. There's on the blue lap fiber cement on the upper portions, and then the proposed corrugated metal panel on the upper level, in addition to that wood material at the principal entrance. So it would be reducing that to no more than three primary materials, and that allows for a certain amount of accent materials to be utilized in detailing and things like that. And then that the rear elevation would probably need to be modified, such that it resembled the front a little bit more.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? But thank you, Peter. We'll open the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant to come up first and fill in any further details.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Beth Pfeifer. I'm here on behalf of 4737 Minnehaha LLC, and we are looking forward to bringing this condominium project. So we were looking at this as a for-sale project to this neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that we recognize has seen a lot of recent construction and a lot of apartment buildings in this neighborhood, and we think this is a great site. It's a great opportunity for some for-sale housing. One of our strong focuses for this project was providing a variety of price points. So we've worked really hard in the design of the building to include some more entry-level for-sale product. As you probably know, a lot of the product in the new condo industry is, first of all, there's not a lot outside of the downtown core, and what there is is extremely expensive. Does not make it easy for first-time buyers to afford anything in a condo product. So one of our key focuses here was making sure that we have a variety of price points, a variety of floor plans, and also really continuing to keep the context of this within the context of the neighborhood, keeping the three-story form with a two-story porch along Minnehaha, and we are excited to bring it forward. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anybody else who wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And if everyone could, who does wish to speak could line up. If you are able, that would be great. Thank you.
Afternoon. My name's Rolf Haig, 4653 42nd Avenue South, and I'm rising to speak against the proposal. This is the third iteration that we've seen of this proposal. It keeps morphing, but the real complaint of the neighborhood is never addressed. Our main problem, that is an existing problem, is that the area that they want to, the alley that they want to route the traffic through goes into the 42nd to 44th cul-de-sac caused by the dead ending of Nawataha. So I just used my high school geometry. I was thinking I should get a PowerPoint, but it might be overkill. So using a ruler and what I remember from geometry, the surface area of that cul-de-sac is about three city blocks. Now, three city blocks, basically currently as it exists, were short half. So we have four exits, and there should be eight. So it creates traffic congestion that is really, you know, really can be very bad. I sent you a memo on behalf of the 67 folks who signed a petition in support of what I'm articulating. I do have a correction to make for that. I mentioned a deaf child is a safety issue in the neighborhood. I was corrected. It is a blind child with developmental delays. So there are already traffic issues that are exacerbated by putting additional vehicles, whether it's 46 or 25, depending on the iteration of the proposal, into that cul-de-sac. To say nothing of the size and, well, of the unit. There is no access to the alley for that project without a change in the zoning of the residential facility. I know that city has a position on curb cuts, but there appear to be, to an untrained eye, at least two curb cuts for the Greg's Auto property. If that's only one, that's fine as well. Using a curb cut onto Minnehaha for traffic for ingress and egress into the garage would solve 90% of complaints of the neighborhood to this project. The issue is safety and congestion. If you don't live next to Minnehaha Park, which is, I'm saying this in the best way, an attractive nuisance, it can be a real challenge getting in and out of the cul-de-sac to get to your house. So the variances appear to be maximizing the footprint of the project, the zoning change. Our objection, very simply, is the fact that the traffic would be routed into the cul-de-sac and very, very seriously adversely affect the neighbors in that area. I've given you a more complete argument in the memo. I tried to get maps to demonstrate the size, but you could talk to the planning people about the ingress and egress capacity of that cul-de-sac and how it compares to other blocks. We would urge you to ask for modifications before you provide any variances or any zoning changes for this project, and subject to your action, we'll reserve further activity. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'm certainly happy to answer them if I can. Otherwise, I'll sit down and be quiet.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody. Thank you. Next up, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chris Pettit, 4624 42nd Avenue South. Apparently a neighbor of two or three people here. Thanks for the time. I too am here to not necessarily turn this into a negative conversation. I'm here to talk about safety, safety for the children, and safety for the pedestrians who live along that alley. I am one of those that lived directly on that alley. My wife and I moved there just two years ago. We're not opposed to development and the right opportunities, right situations. In this case, I'm okay to having a development of that Greg's Auto property, but the exit of their property into the alley is an unsafe situation for the kids going to school in the morning, for people going to work in the morning, coming back in the afternoon, or just going through the alley in general. We all, those of us who live along an alley, know that neighbors don't necessarily drive slowly. They're dark, they're narrow. Right now, just counting on Google Maps, the number of houses that are on that alley, there are 30 properties, properties, give or take. Figure two cars per property, give or take, so that's roughly in and out 120 times a day. This property that they're building or wanting to build is adding another 36 parking spots, I think. That's an increase of 60% in traffic along that alley, which if you think, well, if that were just another house going there, that'd be another two cars, another 36 cars, and that many trips per day or per hour. I ask you folks to seriously consider those of us living there now, and those that will live there in the future and walk in that alley, to have to deal with those cars every day, those additional cars. If you look at their property, as was already mentioned, there's a curb cut already onto Minnehaha. It's an easy no-brainer. If you look at the map of the property in oversight, an overview, they could do a curb cut on Nawataha. Both of those properties, you may say, is unsafe. Both of those properties, you may say, is unsafe for pedestrians going to and from the park or through the neighborhood on those streets, but I'll tell you, those streets were built to accommodate car traffic, not pedestrian traffics or cars going to their garages. So please consider the safety of our children, the safety of everybody else walking through that alley. I know the developer does not want to lose the development space that a curb cut to either street will entail, but they won't be living there. It's the 36 additional cars and traffic that are going to cause the problems for the, those people that are living there. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dan Sheehan. I live at 4322 Nawataha Boulevard. So about two blocks down from the proposed development. Yeah, it, where we're located, it's right on the park at Minnehaha Falls, and our neighborhood is basically where people park to go to the park, to go to eat at Sea Salt, and on a summer night, or really any weekend, it's not uncommon that all parking spaces are taken. Add into that in the winter, the streets are very congested, and one car, in the summertime even, is almost not able to get down the street. When both sides are filled at snow, it's nearly impossible for two-way traffic to exist just on the streets. I walked out my back door and down both alleys, which this project would use. One of them, which was north-south, I, I can tell you, if you haven't been there, you need to, because it's not suitable for two-way traffic, even with the capacity now, and adding 36 more cars or whatever it is, it's just not going to work. And I pity the people that would live on that alley. So then add some snow in the mix, and you have an impossible situation. It's not just, hey, I don't want it. It's, you know, we're talking about safety, we're talking about people just being able to get to work in the morning, and, yeah, it would be a catastrophe, basically. The solution is really just to move it out onto Minnehaha Avenue. I don't recommend Nawataha. It's already cut out. It's a busy street. It's, that's what it's designed for, to handle that capacity. The present solution just isn't workable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any questions, discussion, or would somebody like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Crowder.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A and B, the two rezonings.
We have a motion to approve items A and B, the two rezonings. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Colgill?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Lipkeepier?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Property line. Here are a few context images, including the existing duplex and single-family home that you can see. The block itself does have a mix of densities, including small multifamily duplexes, that sort of thing. But most of those are limited in height to two and a half stories. This is a rendering of the proposed building, which has brick and fiber cement as the main So for the applications that the applicant is requesting, the parking variance from 23 spaces to 10 and site plan review. So the, this site itself has excellent access to transit. And in 2015, the city council passed an ordinance allowing it for a transit incentive reduction in the zoning code for properties that are located near high-frequency transit, which is narrowly defined in the zoning code as being within a quarter-mile of one bus transit stop that has midday headways of 15 minutes or less. So, one of the reasons for doing that was to increase housing affordability and to allow infill development on smaller sites that couldn't accommodate a one-for-one parking ratio. This site is very close to qualifying for the transit incentive reduction, but because of the way that some of the bus routes are configured in this area, it doesn't quite qualify, and I'll get to that in a minute. So the site is along Grand Avenue, which has two high-frequency bus routes. It's located within a quarter-mile of a variety of routes that go both east-west and north-south that have midday headways of 30 minutes. And then it's located between two high-frequency routes, but it's not within a quarter-mile of either one of them. And it's also just over a half-mile away from the 35W 46, the 46th Station on 35W, which has access to lots of high-frequency, or sorry, lots of express routes into downtown and into the suburbs, usually concentrated during rush hour, which will also be served by future Orange Line BRT. So this map is just showing some of the configuration of transit, transit access in the neighborhood, including the Route 18G, which is in a quarter-mile, the Route 46, which is every 30 minutes within a quarter-mile, three high-frequency routes, the 146, 113, and 135. In this area, so we typically consider the Route 4 to be a high-frequency route, but in this area, the Route 4 splits, and some of the legs go down Bryant's and some go down Lyndale, and that's what's happening here. So the site is within a quarter-mile of Lyndale and 48th, but it's .28 miles from Bryant's and 48th. And then the site is just over, just around a third of a mile away from Nicollet, which has the Route 18, which has service of less than every 15 minutes. So, given that excellent access to transit, staff finds that this is, this is an extremely well-connected route in terms of transit access in the city, and finds that the variance to reduce the parking from 23 spaces to 10 is very reasonable, given that transit access. Again, if the site was eligible for the transit incentive reduction, there would be no parking requirement here. For site plan review, the proposed building is 23 dwelling units, is four stories in height, is complying with the setbacks, FAR, and all the other requirements for the R5 District. So I know there has been some concern about the 2040 Plan in this location, and the 2040 Plan does guide for lesser density here. It calls for interior two, which is buildings of up to two and a half stories. But as you all know, the 2040 Plan has not yet formally been adopted yet.
Sure. Yeah, just had a quick question to go back.
Sure.
To the transit. Have, has this reasoning been used in other developments? Where it doesn't qualify, but under, like, I mean, you've done an excellent job putting the argument out there, but just wondering, has this has been an issue in other parts of the city?
Maybe Kimberly can speak to that.
I honestly cannot think of another site that's this well-connected by transit without qualifying for the transit incentive. So it's one that, again, as Lindsay pointed out, is kind of a near miss to qualifying for our transit incentive. In most cases, when there's this many routes within a quarter-mile of a site, it does qualify for that, but just given, you know, some unique nuances here, it doesn't qualify. And I think that's the finding number one, that this is a unique circumstance in this particular situation.
Okay. And so the 2040 Plan does call for lesser density here, but it's not formally adopted yet. Even if the 2040 Plan were, had been adopted yet, the R5 zoning district would still be in place until the zoning code is updated, and we don't have a timeline on that yet. So, you know, even if the 2040 Plan were adopted tomorrow, the R5 zoning would still be in place, and this application is not requesting any alternative compliance. So it is complying with all the standards that are laid out by the Site Plan Review Chapter and the rest of the zoning code. And I did want to also comment, there were some public comments about, some concerns about the noticing. So when, when a public hearing is noticed, notices are sent to the neighborhood group, and they are sent to property owners within 350 feet of the site, they're posted in front and arts and commerce, and there are four placards that are sent to the applicant to place on the site. So in this case, the applicant placed all four placards on the site, but did not place them on the four corners of the site, which is what is technically required by the zoning code. The zoning code does allow for a little allowance that, you know, as long as the intent was met and a bona fide attempt was made to comply, that, that, you know, doesn't invalidate the notice. And the city attorney has also weighed in on this measure, that the notice was not invalidated. And at staff's request, the applicant did modify the placement of the placards four days ago to provide some access on the alley to that notice. So I just wanted to note that as well. The staff recommendation, the side yard setback variance has been withdrawn. Staff is recommending approval of the parking variance and site plan review with the eight stated conditions, which are pretty standard, but also include a condition to provide one long-term bicycle parking space per each unit, just to accommodate that parking reduction. And so I will stand for questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Lindsay, I have two quick questions. Where was the notice posted originally?
They were all four posted along the front elevator, the street-facing elevation.
All visible from the public street, from Grand?
Yes.
Okay. And second, can you remind us, so it's pretty unusual to see an application with no alternative compliance requested. Can you just remind us of what our purview is in imposing conditions when there's not much asked for from a developer?
Can you be a little more specific, about what conditions we can attach to site plan review?
Yes. When, when they're not, when there's no alternative compliance. Generally, we attach conditions in response to alternative compliance. And so what is, what is our ability to attach conditions under these scenarios?
Maybe Kimberly can answer this one, too.
I understand it is very little, but I wanted to double-check.
That's correct. There would need to be some clear nexus between any conditions of approval and some exceptions that are being asked for in the zoning code or other deficiencies that the planning commission finds in the project. So if there are no requests for alternative compliance, there typically is no nexus for applying conditions of approval.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Yeah, just one, one other question about kind of some of the site plan, one of the issues on the public comments. They butt upright against an alley, and there's a significant grade change.
Yep.
Creating a very large wall. Is there any fence or anything to protect people from falling off the alley into the property?
Perhaps the applicant can speak a little bit more. I mean, the alley is higher than the site, so I don't know exactly how the grade is going to work to interact with, you know, folks potentially walking down the alley. So I'll leave that to the applicant to answer, hopefully.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you. We will open the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant to come forward and introduce themselves, add any pertinent information.
Good evening. Dean Navolis, 333 Washington Avenue North. I'll, I'll answer the first question. Yes, there will be a fence along the alley. There's about a five-foot grade difference, and that will be a consideration of the project. I promise to be brief, for the sake of the people who have twins tickets, and pray that they get to go again tomorrow night also. So, I'm going to cover some major points on the project, and, because the only variance we're really talking about was parking, and it was a conscious decision to ask for a parking variance, really on two bases. One, on parking, and I'll describe that, why we think it's important, and two, on affordability, which Lindsay actually gave a, a very good oversight. I've had the privilege, and I don't mean this bragging, to be involved in more housing projects in Minneapolis than any other architect, just have seen everything. We've done everything from affordable all the way to luxury, and sort of like the old farmer's insurance, we've seen everything. And we've seen how residents react, we've seen parking ratios, we've seen how buildings put together, and the range of projects have, have come from micro-units all the way up to large luxury. And in learning this, we've learned a few things of what actually happens and doesn't happen, how buildings behave. And I actually looked back at our database on all our projects throughout Minneapolis and in the first-ranked suburbs of Edina, St. Louis Park. And that basis, the city also in Richfield, to see what was happening. The thing about parking and affordability, as you know, every interior parking space is $25,000. That's the cost. And some people are quoting 30. So the more parking you provide, the less affordable the housing units become, because those units need a subsides of parking, and there's a limit to how much you can charge for parking. Once you get past 100, 125, people park on the streets to avoid the parking charge anyways. And so it's a balance. And we looked at this project in terms of neighborhood goals, because we could make it work without a parking variance and go off to luxury product, and Josh will address that right after me, that that was not our goal, but something that really created a bit of affordability. So our choice was to reduce them on a parking. And in looking at other projects, and I'll use Parkway 25, for example, which is a luxury project, which has a parking ratio of 1.45. That means a space and a half for every unit. This is just on the border of Minneapolis and St. Louis Park. That garage is oversubscribed with a waiting list, and you wonder why, if I'm providing all the parking. The larger the unit, the higher the rent, the more the residents demand parking. So one bedroom unit ends up having two stalls for the husband and wife, or partner, or whatever combination, two benders in it with more, and so end up creating more cars, literally parking begets parking. And there's no such free thing as parking, and that's a fact that looked at billions. So I looked at the other end of the micro-projects I produce, in which the majority of those parking ratios are between .4 and .7. They actually had garages that were subscribed about equal or a little bit empty, a little bit over in the ratio. And so our discovery is that people will self-sort to the type of unit they want, to type their neighborhood, and it actually creates less parking than a more luxury building in which you'll end up having two cars per unit under the basis. So that's number one. And that's just by going through projects, studying all the garages, the waiting lists and so forth. The other factor in this was affordability. That by creating the unit mix we did, which is on the smaller side, and dedicating more space per units versus parking, where we get affordability, in which we're getting our units to fall in the 60s and 70s, AMI, which means adjusted median income. And for Hennepin County, that's $75,000, 60% of that, it's about $42,000. So this building will appeal to people making, this is a single person, between $45,000 and $55,000. So it creates a better affordability on that basis by making that mix on the project. And what we've also discovered in these units, that these smaller units, people tend not to have cars. Part of it's due to what they can afford, but part of it's due to a conscious decision. More and more of our residents are making conscious decisions not to have a car, and conscious decisions live in smaller units as a way of giving back, or a way of working on global war, or as a personal life choice. So I'm seeing this trend growing. And so it may sound counterintuitive that the combination of the smaller units and the more affordable units and the parking variance will actually have a less impact of parking, because the type of residents we're attracting are self-sorting to people that tend not to have cars, and people that tend to entertain outside the building, because size unit, and tend to go to local residents that gather. So while we couldn't make the project work without a variance, the developers, as Joshua just said, felt strongly, this is the right way to go, to provide a housing mix that would best support the neighborhood, both on affordability and the demand for cars. Thank you. Josh?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Great, thank you. My name is Joshua Siegel, and I live at 5414 Washburn Avenue South in the Armitage neighborhood. We've lived there for five years. I am the applicant. My wife and I own and operate two businesses in southwest Minneapolis. We are 10 years in with our first business, Urban Cycle, located at 50th and Penn in the Fulton neighborhood. This business is a personal training, small group class, indoor cycle studio. We love what we do, and we feel like we're part of the community. Our second business is a real estate and construction business called Reimagine Southwest, which was substantiated with our own need to find housing and access to a neighborhood in our beloved Southwest. The core values of our company are integrity, commitment, consistency, learning, and community. We fundamentally believe that life is about meaningful work and meaningful relationships. Our mission is to make the world a better place. While trying to access the neighborhoods since 2010, we lived at 39th and Grand, Highland Park in St. Paul, 45th and York, West End Apartments, St. Louis Park, as well as short-term stays in Eagan, Golden Valley, between leases. My intention is to provide context here, empathy and perspective for those interested in our proposed 23-unit apartment building. If this building was around back then, we would have absolutely been delighted to live in the Tangle Town neighborhood. Our original intention was to build this R5 building with a matter of right. We put together a concept plan that had two levels of parking, one slightly below-grade. However, the city, after city review, it was deemed that the building was five stories, yet still fell under 56 feet. The hardship is in the drastic grade change from front to back. Nevertheless, the city implied that this would not be supported, so we went back to the drawing board and performed additional studies. It is our belief that this process is a symbiotic relationship with city, planning, neighborhood, and market research. Our research and data showed us that there's a huge hole in available studios and single apartments to focus on those that had lifestyles that were relatively carless. We settled on a concept plan that would only reach 47 feet tall, over 16% smaller than allowed, with 23 units and 10 enclosed parking. Our main folk, at four stories. Our main focus here is to address our one application request for a parking variance and acknowledge some of the neighboring concerns about parking. It is deeply important to us to acknowledge the concerns of a few neighbors over a potential parking issue. We want the neighbors in opposition to know that we hear you, and we agree that your concerns are very important. This is why we've spent an unbelievable amount of time and energy mitigating these concerns with the design and functionality of the building. We respect the history and even named our building after the original neighborhood, Fuller Town. We have taken drastic measures to make sure that we address those concerns. For example, we've removed the side yard setback variance requested, we've reconfigured our parking and floor plan. Climate change is real, and we are doing everything in our power to make sure that our process is as green as feasibly possible. We also want this to be a huge net win for the community. Instead of demolishing the single-family homes and the duplex located on the site, we are going to donate and literally move the homes to a vacant lot, a vacant lot, to serve those in need. We have 14 studios, and we unequivocally believe that the majority, if not all of these residents, do not own a vehicle. We believe, and our data supports, that these people consciously choose a different lifestyle. We fundamentally believe that we designed this building for a mix of people that are already present in the neighborhood, and for those trying to access the neighborhood, like my family just six years ago. We believe 50% of the building or so would be millennials or young professionals that do not own a car and commute with means of transportation, as biking, walking, other transit, such as Uber, Lyft, the bus, ride-share. Simply put, this person doesn't live the same way that other neighbors do, and that's okay. They will work from home, meet at nearby coffee shops, or share an office. Their lives originate from where they reside. Our data shows that most of our residents will rarely travel more than five miles on a regular basis, and are in search of affordability. In servicing these residents and facilitating their lifestyle, we even built a bike cafe in the lobby and provided two areas for working space in the lobby and community room. The other half of our residents will be moved-on buyers and first-time homeowners. These folks that want to live in the neighborhood but can't afford to buy a home or keep up a home. Some will sacrifice a vehicle for a place to live. The location is most important, and we feel 40th and Grand is a wonderful and highly walkable area for this resident. This resident is like Diane, who currently lives across the street and is looking forward to living in a new place with relatively the same cost of rent. Diane is looking forward to the elevator present in the building. Mary Beth would also like to live in the building and is looking for more of a long-term stay. Diane may have a vehicle, but Mary Beth will not. It is important to not pick one neighborhood over the other, but we acknowledge parking is a challenge everywhere. But access to housing is even greater a challenge. To my understanding, we are not required to provide affordable housing. However, we do believe in access to affordable housing and will do our part. At the neighborhood meeting, someone suggested that we give a rent credit to tenants that don't own a vehicle. We think this is a good idea, and we will incorporate this into our process. Our building is just 44 feet from La Fresca and 132 feet from the corner of 40th and Grand, which is a four-way stop. I don't know of a better spot in Southwest for a functional building like this, and a spot more deserving than 40th and Grand for those in need of housing. Thank you, Lindsay, and CPED. Thank you, Planning Commission. We appreciate your time. We hope you support this variance. Thank you.
Question from Commissioner Crowder.
Yes. For the applicant, can you explain the shared easement that you will be taking advantage of here, and does it actually allow this type of use in a redevelopment scenario?
To my understanding, it does. We are also expanding the curb cut, just to provide better access for all types of vehicles. I, to my understanding, it's a split easement.
Okay. And then the second question is, can you explain how you've taken this location into account as far as building design? You know, how the community, you know, the textures of the community, the massing, the scale?
Sure.
I'm curious how that is.
Sure. Our intention was to build more of a brownstone building. We went a little more modern with the white brick. In conversations with the neighborhood, we're also open to providing red brick to be a little bit more traditional. We believe, you know, there's a couple fourplexes right across the street, if you're standing on the corner or at the front door of 4740, and it's all brick facade and stucco on the back. We're going to provide something similar. We proposed white brick, but we're okay with red brick as well, which might be a little more traditional. But we wanted to provide more of a 100-year look, so it's brick, stucco, and then a little metal on the sides. Is there any other questions?
Any other questions? So you none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will open the public hearing for everybody else. I am going to not hold people to a time for your testimony, but we're going to hold total time to 40 minutes. Please line up and keep your comments concise, and keep them original, not repeat points. Others, before you have made, come to the mic and speak your name and address for the record.
Am I live, or is it memored?
You're live.
Carter Joe Dwyane, 4724 Grand Avenue. Owner, occupant for over 30 years. I want to first thank you for giving us time to present our concerns about the Fuller Town Flats project. Your mission is to represent and work for the people. But the Fuller Town Flats project, if approved, is not acceptable to the residents of this neighborhood. The site plan is not compatible with other buildings in the neighborhood, and a parking variance from 23 to 10 will be absolutely suffocating. We are not breaking any laws by our protest here today. You will be breaking laws if this project and requested variance is approved. The project is not compatible with nearby properties. Further, it will burden the neighborhood residents and businesses, creating additional parking and safety issues. Follow the law. In light of the city's plans for 2040, which would not permit this type of structure, why is the Planning Commission seemingly so adamant to approving this project? Why are you trying to rush it through and apparently do everything you can to ignore the laws and the sentiment of the people it will affect the most? Why? Follow the law. The developers' requests for variances have demonstrated no unique or practical difficulty, nor have they requested any reasonable relief. The variance would alter the essential character of the area and would be injurious to nearby properties by creating additional parking issues and safety concerns. Parking in the area is already a major problem, especially during the winter. It is a problem for cars, trucks, moving vans, trailers, city buses, school buses, fire, safety equipment, and anybody with a mobility issue. Add to that the fact the city cannot or will not plow to the curbs. As a result, one side of the street gets closed, which limits and restricts parking even more from November through April. To the city, I say, there is no can or can't, it's will or won't. In short, this project does not promote development compatible with nearby properties or neighborhood character. It violates code and variance policies. Fuller Town Flats is not reasonable. Fuller Town Flats receives, receives, excuse me, Fuller Town Flats relieves no plight, but it would change the essential character of the neighborhood. Fuller Town Flats should not be approved. Follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jane Istone. I live at 4716 Grand Avenue. Thanks for your service and allowing me to speak. I also want to thank you advance for committing to follow the law, and I speak to you today about, well, I'm going to speak about three things. The fourth item was the fact that it was improperly notified to the neighborhood. They actually only put one on the front of each property, the notification, and it looked like a eviction notice. So no one knew what it was when it was installed. I also want to speak to you about how the request for the variance falls, fails to meet one of the three criteria required by law. Secondly, deficiencies in the proposed site plan, and finally, a petition against the development by the neighborhood group that it will reside in. First, I want to remind the commissioners that the variance can only be granted if it meets all three of the requirements. One, it must be, address a practical difficulty that is unique to the property. Two, must be reasonable. Three, must not change the essential character of the locality, be injurious to other properties or detrimental to the welfare of the general public. There'll be several people that will speak about that. Economic considerations, meaning in order to qualify or be able to support the fact that he has the cost to build this, isn't a reason to allow for this variance. I want to note that the applicant on page 14 of the CPED staff report had only requested the variance to reduce the minimum parking to the 10 spaces. The applicant should have never been deemed complete because of that. So follow the law, deny the variance. Requirement number one in, for the variance is that it needs to be a practical difficulty unique to the property. In their applicant, the applicant stated the variance is needed in order to allow the development of 23 apartment buildings, or apartment units in the property. The applicant does not make any attempt to identify any other practical difficulty unique to the property. The law is clear. Economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. Please follow the law, deny the variance. Curiously, rather than simply analyzing the applicant's request, the staff took it upon themselves to analyze the practical difficulty not identified by the applicant, and suggested a variance is needed as it is related to the transit incentive allowed under the code. Unfortunately, the staff admits that it does not actually abide by that transit incentive. It states that the site does not qualify. It is not within a quarter of a mile of a singular bus that runs midday 15 minutes or more more frequently. The staff asserts that there is excellent access to frequent transit routes, yet there are only two buses that run a quarter of a mile from the site, the four and the 46, and they run 30 minutes, as Lindsay had mentioned earlier. So again, that does not constitute that transit incentive. Please follow the law, deny the variance. Staff stated that the nearby orientation of transit stops is a unique circumstance that was not created by the applicant. While this is true, it does not create a circumstance that is unique to the property. Again, does not make, stand as part of the first requirement. It is not a practical difficulty unique to the property. It is not a practical difficulty unique to the property. Please follow the law, deny the variance. Requirement two is reasonableness. The four-story site is simply not reasonable. Approving the parking variance that allows for construction of a four-story building on a block where all other structures are one to two and a half stories, both currently and in the future plans, is not reasonable. The closest four-story building is nearly a mile away on either Nicollet or Lindell, both at 53rd, which is next to the municipalities such as the fire station, gas station, and liquor store. Again, this is not reasonable. Follow the law, deny the variance. Increasing the intensity and use of this site will be 766%. That makes it unreasonable. Intensifying the site for the three, from three units to 23 is simply not reasonable. Building two triplexes would double it, totally normal, fits within this neighborhood, and would be much more reasonable. Building 10 units would increase it to about 300%. Again, one would argue that that would be much more reasonable. But making it over 700% more dense seems very unreasonable. This apartment building would have almost four times more units than the next largest building on the block, which is, as Lindsay showed before, a six-unit condo building at the end of the street at 47th. Again, this is not reasonable. Please follow the law and deny the variance. Increasing traffic and congestion is not reasonable. An additional 20 more units on this housing block, which currently has 54, will increase the congestion on the street significantly. It is not reasonable. Each unit, if each unit, for example, had only three packages or meals delivered and two car-sharing rides each week, that would add over 100 new commercial vehicles each week. They will create difficulties for emergency vehicles. School buses that two houses away pick up children and drop them off every day at 40th and Grand, and other modes of transportation, especially as we, other people will mention, in the wintertime, both sides of the street are snow emergency. So no one can park on the street during that first day. Again, this is not reasonable. Please follow the law and deny the variance. Requirement three is the essential character. We've talked about this. Lindsay has mentioned that, yes, there are only buildings that are two and a half stories or smaller. This will obviously change the character of the neighborhood. How it will be injurious to other property owners, we have a few other people that will talk about that, specifically the property next door that has to share the driveway. It will be a significant change for that building as well as the ones next door. The other issue that was mentioned, they did talk about the 10-foot retaining wall at the back of the property. Up until today, there was no mention of a fence in the plan. There is no mention of a fence. There are kids that go back and forth between Fuller Park at the end of the alley, go through the alley. This could be very dangerous to them and is unreasonable. And I also want to address the deficiency in the site plan. The commission itself talks about promoting development that is compatible with nearby properties. As we discussed, it's not compatible with other properties as it's much taller than the buildings around it. The proposed development is 383% larger than the next largest building. There is also not a shadow plan included in the site plan at all, as well as there is no security plan or lighting plan at all for this building. And those things should have been included, and because of that, we should reject the site plan and ask for that to be redone before it's moved forward. The proposed development does not comply with crime prevention through environmental design standards, particularly in the rear of the building where the developer is proposing a creation of a 62-foot-long corridor between the retaining wall and the building with no natural surveillance. And with that 10-foot drop, there's a lot of things you can imagine that could be unsafe in the back of the building. My fourth and final point is to refer to the physical and online petitions. You guys have gotten those, I believe. We had 152 physical signatures. I made a quick little, I can submit it, a quick little map. Maybe I'll bring it forward, but. It shows that these are the people that, from that physical petition and the 60 people that wrote in prior to the report being published are opposed to the plan. In addition, I wanted to submit that there was an article that Mr. Siegel, he spoke to the Southwest Journal after the, after the meeting with the Tangle Town Neighborhood Association. And he specifically said that he didn't want, he was, does want to do the project, but he wants the neighborhood to be behind it as well. I don't want to walk around the neighborhood with blinders on. Specifically, it was curious that the neighborhood, there was no point taken in the city's plan or the report by the staff that the neighborhood association was opposed to this plan. I find that curious that that was not included within the staff report, because that's kind of a big deal. Neighborhood groups often are neutral to plans or support them. Our neighborhood group does not support this plan because it was poorly planned. It did not get proper public notification. Most neighbors did not even know about it until that meeting.
I'm going to ask you to finish.
I'm wrapping up.
Okay.
And it appears that the city is supporting it despite the existing rules that we have. So it's clear, it doesn't, the variance does not meet any of the three requirements. It's not practical, there's no practical difficulty, it's not reasonable, and it changes the essential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schrader.
Sure. I just wanted to jump in because I want to make sure that we're, no clapping. It's just how this runs down here. But it is something I want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak. That said, we're quickly hitting, if everyone speaks that long, we're not going to hit 40. So I wanted to kind of gauge the audience and my fellow commissioners. Would it be better to have a time limit or have a couple people speak for, I know that you're very well organized. So I don't want to cut off what you have planned, and at the same time, I want to make sure people have a chance to speak, if that makes sense, and try and have that balance.
Great. There's another 25 minutes. Please keep concise.
Okay. So, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Miller, and I own the, one of the units in the condo at 4744 Grand. This is the triplex that shares the driveway with this proposed development. I live in the unit with my wife and our child, and I serve as the president of our small condo association. The other two members of the, of this triplex are sitting in the room with me as well. So given our proximity to this development, I'm sure you can understand we have many concerns about how it will impact us. The CPED staff report indicates that this development will not be injurious or detrimental to nearby properties, but I'm here to tell you that it will. So let's start with the shared driveway. How can it possibly be concluded that increasing the number of the cars using the driveway by 260% is not detrimental? There will be more car lights shining in our windows, additional noise, wear and tear in the driveway, and of course, more opportunity for one car, conflict when one car is trying to leave as another one arrives. And that's just talking about the cars with the residents. Frequent moving trucks, delivery trucks, and ride-sharing vehicles will also clog our access to the driveway and create further disruption. Additionally, we are inevitably going to be regularly displaced from using our driveway and parking in our garages throughout the entire construction process. And that's probably going to take at least a year. So I understand the city does not want to create any new curb cuts, but you should only approve a plan that does not create an undue hardship on the existing residents. This driveway was never meant to be shared with a commercial building. The staff report indicates vehicular access and circulation has been designed to minimize conflicts with pedestrian traffic and with surrounding residential users. I firmly disagree with that claim. So we've got, we live in Minnesota. We have a lot of snow. I'm really concerned about how the snow would be removed. Since we moved into our home in 2006, we have had a shared responsibility of snow removal with the former owners of 4740 Grand. We utilize a plowing service that clears the drive by pushing the snow into the yard at 4740 Grand. And if needed, up against our retaining wall back by our garages. However, there's only a little bit of room back there to park the snow without blocking access to our garages. So looking at the, looking at the actual project plan, there's going to be no yard. There's going to be no place to put that snow other than out into the street on Grand Avenue. That is huge hardship to us. So with the shared driveway, there is an inherent partnership that needs to exist between each owner that shares a drive. So since Josh Siegel had purchased his property at 4740 Grand in August of 2018, he has made no attempt to contact us to share either financially or personally in the responsibility of snow removal. Josh also never even cleared his driveway or enforced his tenants to clear the driveway, and it caused a severe, severe, slippery sidewalk all winter long last year. One of my neighbors actually reported that her daughter had slipped and fell and hurt herself quite badly on that sidewalk. So I'm led to believe that Josh would continue to exhibit this unneighborly behavior as he marches forward with developing his property. So another thing to think about is trash removal. Josh's plan is to store trash and recycling in the parking structure of his building. So the city of Minneapolis will not collect his trash since his building will not have any alley access. Removal of this trash is going to need to be done periodically by a private company, presumably once or twice per week. This means large, noisy garbage and recycling trucks are going to need to navigate up and down our shared driveway, causing more noise, disruption, increasing the potential for property damage as these large trucks attempt to navigate down the narrow driveway. So alternatively, Josh can move his dumpsters out to the street, down the driveway, and parked out under the street, so creating an eyesore for people on Grand Avenue, as well as obstructing pedestrian and bike traffic passing by. And I can only imagine our friends having dinner at La Fresca, sitting downwind from the dumpsters while they enjoy their ceviche and empanadas. They're really going to enjoy having that out there. This certainly will be detrimental to the neighborhood. You've all seen the exhibits I have sent about the plan here. What is puzzling to me is that, as you can see here, the property line for Josh's 4740 runs completely horizontal from the front of the house to the back of the house. However, his plan is, once he gets down here, he's going to go ahead and cut into our existing retaining wall back by our garage. He can't do that. That's our property. He cannot take down an existing structure on our property. So you can see that on page 18 at the top, and page 27 of the CPED staff report is what shows that. So looking at Josh's development, his driveway, it seems inevitable that he's going to have to have that wall removed in order to have his tenants exit the parking structure and to go down the driveway, but he's not going to do that.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up pretty soon.
I want to talk about the size of the building itself. You know, the Urban Design Policy 10.6.1 of the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth states, "Design buildings to fulfill light, privacy, and view requirements for this subject building, as well as for adjacent properties." So we bought our second-story unit because of its location, the high ceilings, the large windows that let in an abundance of breeze and light, and give us panoramic views of the sky and the trees and our surrounding neighborhood. If a four-story building goes up right next to us, merely 11 feet, we are going to lose all of that. When our building was built, it was built within the essential character of the neighborhood, with no other buildings on the block being more than two and a half stories high. So we have two glass, block glass windows that view right into our showers. Right now, the building next to us can't see anything of substance through those windows because their vantage point is lower. Anybody on the third or fourth story of this new building will be able to see right into our showers, avoiding all privacy from me, my lovely wife, and our pre-teen child. I don't know how a rational person could think this is not injurious or detrimental to the surrounding properties. So in closing, I just want to read from a post that our own city council member, a member of this commission, Jeremy Schroeder, he recently made to his Ward 11 Facebook page on September 18th of 2019. So Jerry wrote, Jeremy wrote, "As Minneapolis grows and becomes more attractive to developers, it is critical that the city does everything it can to protect the folks that already live here." So I'm asking that the city of Minneapolis protects us. Do not approve this variance or the site plan. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And I'll remind everybody, you know, before us, as we heard from staff at the beginning, we really are reviewing one variance on the parking. So we've heard a number of comments on a number of elements of this project, but the injuriousness to health, et cetera, really refers to the parking. So I want people to keep their comments on point and understand the limits of our jurisdiction up here. Thank you.
Is that the remaining time?
Yes, it is.
Okay. My name is Jeremy Reilly. I've lived at 4717 Grand with my spouse Catherine for 38 years. We're part of the fabric of the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the transit incentive being offered as a reason to grant a variance. As been mentioned, there is no midday transit stop within a quarter of a mile that fits the 15-minute guideline or requirement. I'm a transit user. I am familiar with the way the bus system works, and I hope it gets better, but it doesn't work as well as it could. And the thought of adding perhaps 25 cars to our already crowded block, which extends during peak times all the way down at least to 47th Street without a place to park, is very problematic. I'd like to speak about the transit incentive. I'm just going to go through the buses. The closest bus is on Grand Avenue. It's an 18, which typically runs on Nicollet. That runs every hour. It's convenient, but it runs every hour. The 4 runs on Lindell or Bryant. During midday time, they never run more often than 25 or 30 minutes. During rush hour time, it's a little bit more often, but the rush hour times are very constrained. The 18 on Nicollet, six tenths of a mile from Grand Avenue, runs regularly. It's a high-density route, runs regularly all day, except before 6 o'clock and after 8:30. The 135 makes two trips a day, but 30 minutes apart. And in the, they run at 7 and they run at 8. The 146 goes north and south. It also does not run regularly at less than 25-minute intervals. Couple of times in the morning, it does. The 113 goes to the University of Minnesota. It's seasonal. It has three buses in the morning at the 6 to 7 o'clock hour and 3 at the 8 o'clock hour. They run 15 to 20, they run less than 15 to 20 minutes apart. However, all these buses are going in different directions. The only feasible way to get downtown is to take regularly, is to take an 18, which is six tenths of a mile, and there is an elevation that a person with any sort of impairment would find difficult to walk. The 113 I covered, the 146, the 46 goes north and south. No, the 46, I'm sorry, goes east and west. It goes to the light rail stop. That doesn't run more often than half, every half an hour. So the law is about the transit incentive really being clear and following the letter of the law that a bus runs every 15 minutes in the midday hours. This doesn't happen. It doesn't happen. And as a regular bus user, I can tell you, getting down here, I couldn't get on one of the buses I was going to ride because it was filled with Washburn students. That happens as well. So you have to consider this transit incentive and the speculation that it is going to happen because nobody's going to have a car as being a bit suspect. That isn't reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Denise Takashida, and I'm at 4737 Harriet Avenue. I really want to talk about the variance and as it relates to the uniqueness and practical difficulty. I did extensive research on our buses because I've lived in the area for over 20 years. I've taken the bus. The only time it is excellent and accessible to great transit is during rush hour to and from downtown Minneapolis. If people don't work in downtown Minneapolis, it doesn't work. It simply is not accessible and it's not frequent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stacia Johnson Steinhegen. I live at 4724 Harriet
I live at forty-seven, twenty-four Harriet Avenue South. I live a block away in the R-one district. I'm also a landlord in uptown of an R-two property, been a landlord for twenty-nine years. Josh, if you're looking for another place to develop, I can give you lots of ideas. This property does not qualify for the transit incentive parking reduction. The idea that the transit requirement is close to okay or provides excellent access to acceptable transit is false. The ballpark next door to the ballpark is not enough to establish the legal requirement under the statute. Follow the law. This commission is required to address the question posed in the application. Will the requested variance after the, alter the essential character of the locality be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property? And if granted, will the variance be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public or those utilizing the property? The staff's written answer to this question shows absolutely no reflection, nor site nor community investigation. Instead, it merely repeats the question, inserting the idea that reducing the number of parking spaces by thirteen will be fine for all. Not so. With just minimal investigation of census data, neighborhood history, character, and reports from the current residents, as many signatures, letters, and voices are here to show, it is impossible for a four-story, two-lot, thirty-two, twenty-three-unit building with only ten parking spaces plopped mid-block to not be maligned and injurious to the essential character use, health, safety, or welfare of the public and its residents. Our history and forward-looking community design, supported in the two thousand and forty plan, defines our use. Our neighborhood is small-scale residential. Four, six, eight units, maybe, not twenty-three. One to two and a half stories, not four stories. It's out of character, and in fact, it's out of character for everything about a half-mile around us. We are an island. This beautiful R-five is an island. And what that means is that the transit is not caught up to it yet. It would be putting the cart before the horse. In addition, this structure would alter the character of the block. It would be injurious to the enjoyment of the properties surrounding it as regards green space, shadowing views, density. It would affect the welfare of nearby property owners as living in its shadow will most certainly lower their property valuation as proposed. If you plan on approving this variance, would you do me a favor and place an offer on some of the properties living right next door? I'm sure they'd be happy to sell it to you today if you plan to move forward. Limiting, limited combining of lots is not what we plan to do in the future in this neighborhood, so why would we allow it today? Parking cars and transit, this is the main issue at hand. Before I touch on this, I want to, and the injuries that it does to our neighbors in Fuller Park and our businesses at the commercial nodes. By the way, these are the things, these, Fuller Park and our businesses and the character of this neighborhood is the reason, I am sure, why these developers want to put this development here. It should be a great, it's, we've invested in this, in this neighborhood, all of us have invested in this neighborhood. We need the developer to do the same. Invest some money, make the parking right, make it within, make it right scale. That won't bring values down. That won't injure the parking and the people who have to have difficulty getting to their car. Until our city has adequate transit service to this R-five multifamily island and its surrounding neighborhoods, there will be cars aplenty, both those on the street full-time for residences and the ones coming and going to our businesses. I don't care how many bike stations you make there, the residents affording these units will expect the comfort, convenience, and requirements of a twenty-two-minute drive to work, which the census shows us a Minneapolitan expects. As my son put it, twenty years old, despite my many, many, many tries to get him to take the bus to work, to school, none of he or his friends grew up here use the bus. He says, "It just isn't convenient, timely, and you can't even get there half the time."
I'll ask you to wrap it up very soon.
Mm-hmm.
Got people behind you.
Businesses, we've welcomed and approved variances for several new businesses to our Grand and Forty-eighth and Grand and Forty-sixth commercial nodes over the past ten years. If this, if Fullerton Flats was approved, the resident parking influx would likely negatively impact those businesses and would choke the ability for us to add further businesses, which have very much enhanced the flavor of our neighborhood. And again, one of the reasons I'm sure our developers would like to be building there. We need to save bandwidth for those businesses. We need to protect the businesses that are already serving the neighborhood that we've approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Linda Carlson. I live at forty-seven, twenty-eight Grand Avenue South. I'm going to speak quickly. I'm here because I believe that a twenty-three-unit building with ten parking spots is unreasonable, as we all believe. It's ultimately, it does not follow the law, and it will add a significant amount of stress to our neighborhoods, already congested streets, and as a result, to our families. And when a driveway, Jeff's driveway, becomes as busy as an alley, and I'm going to refer to that because with the amount of increased traffic, it will be, it will compromise the safety of the children who walk, scooter, bike on their way to Fuller Park. I heard somebody mention alleyways as the places for more car traffic. Driveways that face the street are more hazardous. So I realize we're not an accurate representation of the tenants that the developer hopes to attract, but just for arguments, hey, could you raise your hand if you or anyone you live with leases owns a car? Anybody in your home? Okay, so I would, you don't have a car? Okay, I would argue that more than fifty percent of people in this day and age own cars, and I would say that it would be irresponsible to only provide ten spots for twenty-three residents. We assume that more than twenty-three people will actually live there. Do I want to live in this world with less dependence on cars? Absolutely. But it's not a reality in this moment in this city. So please raise your hand. I'm sorry for all the participation, but if you are a year-round biker, winter bike commuter, all right, there are very few of us, and I can tell you, when I bike to work at six-thirty in the morning, I don't see anybody. In mid-January, there are not a lot of bikers on the road. And I actually own two bikes, one for icy conditions and one for snowy conditions because it is not for the faint of heart. One of the other handraisers is my husband. We fill our tiny one-car garage with bikes. And we still own two cars because it just is impossible to do everything you need to do, and it's not practical. There's just not enough hours in the day. If ten parking spots are all that can be worked into this development, please, please, build a beautiful ten-unit building. There are so many other red flags on so many levels, though it's hard to say that, but I would love to see a beautiful ten-unit building in our neighborhood. And lastly, well, a couple more things. In our neighborhood, alleys, of alleys, driveways in the front of homes are the exception. On the west side of the forty-seven hundred block of Grand, there are two. One of them is home to a single car, the other is the shared driveway, which, if this development happens, will essentially function as an alley. Our block is a very popular route for families on their way to Fuller Park. There's no crosswalk for this driveway, no way to alert kids of the dangers of regular traffic in and out. This is a significant safety concern. Fuller Park's popularity and charm are due in large part to the essential character of our family-centered neighborhood. People go there because it's a park surrounded by quiet streets and homes. It's not on Fiftieth, for instance, like some of the other parks. So a four-story, twenty-three-unit, a building a quarter block away will undeniably alter the character of Fuller Park. So this may seem like a minor variance to you, and that's precisely because you don't live here. We are the experts of our neighborhood. We see the children. We see the city and school buses, the Fuller Park activities that happen daily, and we see the dreadful parking, every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So you have a job to do. Hold developers accountable. Please follow the law. That's it.
Thank you. Next up, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Dennis Nordstrom. I live at forty-seven oh one Grand Avenue. I'm one of the owners of the six-unit condo. I'll just cut this way back. Let me just address the parking issue. As an owner of the, one of the owners of the condo, we have two small units that they're talking about, and I'm just going to talk about those two units. One is a one-bedroom unit with millennials and young professionals. Two people live in that one-bedroom unit. Both of them own a car. Millennials and young professionals also live in the small efficiency. Two people live in the efficiency, two cars. This project's going to easily generate probably thirty to forty cars, so I'm encouraging you to vote no to the variance. There is not one businessperson that we have chatted with in the neighborhood that supports this also, and you guys have that as a matter of record. Some of them have written in to you. I just want to say that we are not afraid of density. Our two blocks are probably the most dense area in the, in the near neighborhood. Twenty, fourteen out of the twenty-five buildings are multifamily already. We're not afraid of density. We love and encourage diversity, and we are certainly not afraid of change. But we are encouraging you in no uncertain terms to say no to this variance. Let them come back to you in a few weeks under the great two thousand and forty plan that conceptually you've already said yes to and will pass on to the full board, our full council. So we're encouraging you to do that. We're not afraid of density. We're not afraid of diversity. We're not afraid of change. Just work with us and help us do this in a smart way, because what we have now is not smart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Michelle Jansen, forty-seven, forty-one Harriet Avenue. I just want to say one thing. You've heard tonight from the neighbors a lot of their health and safety concerns that they have associated with this project. I just want to point out that none of these health and safety concerns have been studied. There have not been any proposed solutions to these concerns by the developers in their plan. All we ask is that you consider these health and safety concerns associated with granting the parking variance before voting. We need to study the effects, the effects this project will have on our neighborhood and proceed cautiously until we have done so. Until then, we feel this project should be delayed, and the variance should not be granted until the health and safety concerns of the community have been thoroughly studied and addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter West, and I live on forty-seventh and Harriet. And I just wanted to say that I've done a lot of door-knocking, more than in my entire life, in the last couple of weeks. And I want to say that this development is opposed by the neighborhood nearly universally. I'm sure he brought up a couple of names, but there, for the most part, it's universal that we're against it, and the Tangletown Association has voted against this variance as well. And by my count, the only individuals that want this variance are the developer, his backers, and an individual or two on the CPED staff, whom we believe have ignored or stretched laws to fit their case. The city's intent for its future is clear. The two thousand and forty plan shows that this development, as proposed, would not be allowed at this location. The two thousand and forty plan is your idea. At best, it's improper to squeak this in just before the council votes on the two thousand and forty plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take two more speakers, given that Mr. Schroeder and I both. I, I, well, I'm going to jump in. I think I'd like, if, how many more people are interested in speaking? Yeah, I think we, why don't we just go through that? Works. All right, is, this is it? Everybody that's standing is, all right, then, everybody, please keep in mind there are people behind you. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Larson. I live at fifty-seven, forty-nine Morgan Avenue South. It's actually Ward thirteen. I am in favor of infill development that I think is done thoughtfully, which I believe this is. The case for the parking variance, which I think the city staff articulated well, was certainly one of the reasons that made this a proposal that got legs in the first place. I'd also like to state that I think the passion and the pride shown by residents and the Neighborhood Association here demonstrate the need for more folks to be able to join this neighborhood and to live, to live in this neighborhood. I'd also like to point out that an argument that the parking is so bad currently by residents who demonstrate this pride and continue to live there, that in a city where everybody, everybody pays for everyone else's free parking is a fool's paradise. Again, what the, what the architect articulated at the start was a market-based approach where we can drive to less demand for cars and parking by appropriately sizing those units, that the parking issue, to whatever degree you believe in it, is actually exacerbated by making fewer larger units. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask everybody to be respectful of every speaker in this room, please.
I'm Jim Grage. I live at forty-seven hundred Pleasant, so I'm a block away and, but it, the parking cars is a problem, right? The variance is asking to go from what is determined to be eight, twenty-eight spaces, twenty-three spaces, down to ten. I mean, it seems like they're asking for a variance of an unrealistic number. It seems to me, if you're going to grant a variance, it ought to be for very good reasons, and it ought to benefit the community. And, I mean, you can see that we all feel that it's not benefiting the community to do this. So do not go this extra step. It just seems like, follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, back in the line back here, please shift the line around behind the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hey there, Erin Elica, forty-three, forty-three Grand. I live in Kingfield, and I'm just a couple of blocks from where the development's proposed. I'm here to express my support for the variance because we need to house people, not cars. I'm excited to see more multifamily housing in the neighborhood. There's plenty of parking in the area, and many Tanglehome, Tangletown homes have garages, as evidenced by their famous annual garage sale. Less car storage means more room for housing and reduces the cost, as the architect noted, for both renters and developers. Recent study in Portland, Oregon showed that mandating car storage essentially prohibited affordable development by raising the cost of development by two-point-five times. I'd like to see parking minimums removed completely in favor of parking maximums, but I realize that's another conversation entirely. Sends me to think that some of my neighbors feel that housing cars is more important than housing people. We're in the midst of a climate emergency and need to drastically reduce our CO2 emissions, but everyone's up in arms about where all the cars will go. We're in the midst of a housing shortage, and people are still talking about neighborhood character as if the most important thing in the neighborhood were the height and material buildings rather than the people living there. Many folks making these arguments say that they're all for density housing, just not in their neighborhood or backyard. I don't think these arguments are made in good faith, and I feel that they're made to make development less affordable, keep undesirable renters out of an enclave, and maintain exclusivity in the status quo. I support the variance because Minneapolis needs to house people, not cars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Greg Plumb. I live at forty-seven oh four Grand Avenue. I've been a landlord there for twenty-two years. I currently live in the building, across the street from the six-plex. You will note that the six-plex has four garages, and the gentleman mentioned the two efficiency apartments, they have four cars between them. The variance that they're asking for will just exacerbate the problem that's already there. It's an emergency route. They have problems with snow. Adding those additional cars is not meeting the requirement for the variance. It's also, I mean, people talked about Fuller Park. It's also a corridor where the students go to Washburn High School, high traffic. It's very dangerous. The summer, there was a crash at forty-seven oh four, or forty-seven and Grand and a rollover there. Speed is an issue there. Adding the traffic, adding the cars is not appropriate. It doesn't meet the criteria for the variance. So please do your job.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bruce Brunner, twenty-four, nineteen West Twenty-Second Street. I'm in support of this project. I'm actually partnering with Joshua to help make this project very sustainable. My intention is to pick up and move both the duplex and single-family home to a property that I own nearby. That will be saving three housing units that will become affordable housing, as the cost to move them is less the cost than the cost to build, which will allow us to rent those units at sixty percent AMI or lower. By moving the duplex and the single-family home, we'll also be saving over a hundred and fifty thousand pounds of construction material from going into landfills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Meyer, six zero one Sixth Street Southeast, and I'm the Park Commissioner for District One. And I have been campaigning against parking requirements for the last decade. I bought a copy of the book, The High Cost of Free Parking, for every council member in two thousand and fifteen. And I'm asking you to support this variance because parking requirements are unethical. They make housing more expensive. Transit for livable communities found that in Minneapolis, the average underground parking spot costs about forty thousand dollars. So when you require those to be built, you know, most of them are going to be underground nowadays, you are massively increased. nowadays, you are massively increasing the cost of housing. In Seattle, they did a comprehensive study on their parking and they found that the total value of all the parking throughout the city was $117,677 per household. Now, for comparison, the median household average wealth is $97,000. So I don't think Minneapolis has done any comparable study, but I think that Minneapolis is a comparable city to Seattle. And that is a tremendous amount of money that we are putting into subsidizing cars. I view minimum parking requirements as probably the largest component of what I describe as the auto suburban industrial complex, which is all of the various policies that we have that subsidize car-centric and suburban infrastructure. So, you know, if we're going to be serious about taking action on climate change, the first thing that you need to do is stop actively make it worse. It is really unethical to tell a builder that you must create additional car parking. For people like me, like I've never driven a car in my life, but I still have to pay for it because it's bundled in with the price of the housing or the price of goods whenever I want to buy something. I don't have the, the opportunity to opt out and say, I'd rather have my $117,000. For those who do drive, you know, we have the last century of policy that has created an abundance of parking throughout the city. So there are options for them. There aren't really very many options for me. So I'm asking you to support this and I know that you do because you voted to completely eliminate parking requirements in the 2040 Plan. But we need to act now, so I'm asking you not to wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you ask questions?
No, sorry. You may, in the hallway, of each other. Please state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Davis. I live at 4724 Grand. I'm going to mostly address the bus issue instead of the car issue. I have both. I have the go-to card and I have a car. I've had to take myself to doctor appointments. I've had to take elderly friends and family to doctor appointments. I've had to deal with groceries. There's many reasons I use my car that are not, I'm not able to do on a bus. The bus, the main point I want to make about the bus is simply that, as Jeremy was over in our neighborhood, as we pointed out to him, the bus routes that are touted as being frequent are closer to half a mile away. And I know because I take the bus and I walk up, they're not only a distance away, but we are in a bowl in that neighborhood, 48th and Grand, I believe is around 900 feet. The elevation going up to take either bus, either of the frequent buses, is a 3% slope over a half a mile. So you're talking about going up like this for five short blocks to either bus. It's impossible. If, you know, I had an operation one year, I couldn't, I could barely make it to the corner, you know, let alone up a hill. So I'm asking you to think about the nitty-gritty of a neighborhood when you're making your decision, not just what it looks like on a map. You have to be there and see it. You have to deal with the topography. And I will restate the, I'll restate what our neighborhood's residents feel, which is, we're not opposed to density. We're opposed to a project that is, has a scale that is too large for the, for the site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to the gentleman with the cane, were you in line to...
It's my father.
Sure, you were not in line to speak. Very good. One more, very short, and then it's the last one. Thank you.
I hear a lot about, I'm Bill Hendricks, 4749 Grand Avenue South. Okay, I live kittywampus from where the new building's going to be. Everybody's talking about biking and saving gas and global warming. I just want you guys to know, which I never thought of, but Bill Thompson and Tom Crafteter, they live on Harriet. They own a Focus, which is a hybrid. They also just bought a electric car. Another neighbor of ours on, where does, anyway, right in the neighborhood, they just bought a Tesla. There are electric cars moving into our neighborhood and they're going to require parking too. And I want to say, our neighbors, they, Michael and I, we own low mileage or high mileage cars, so it is, we're considering it. We're not just saying to hell with global warming. We're very concerned. Our neighborhood is very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have two applications before us, a variance and site plan review. Is there any discussion? Would someone like to start us off with a motion? Mr. Crowder?
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant. Can you address the retaining wall issue brought up by the property to the south?
Sure. Thanks for the question. What we had initially thought of was removing the retaining wall for the south neighbor. It wasn't impacting our building. Currently, there's a three-car garage. The neighbors back up actually into the driveway and into our property in front of the single-car garage that's present. So we were mindful of the south neighbors. It really doesn't have an impact on our building. We also thought, we had a conversation with the three owners a couple of Fridays ago to take care of snow removal. We had talked about actually removing the snow from the property and being accountable for all snow removal and maintenance for the future of that driveway. But the retaining wall doesn't impact our property. It was just the feasibility of the turning radii from the south neighbor. Is it, any other questions?
Other questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any further discussion? Would someone like Commissioner Schrader?
I'm sure, I just want to, since my name was mentioned, kind of put some context around that quote. It was out of context. It was my work around the tenant opportunity of purchase and basically just summary from the, in the, to do some transparency. It's just a matter for folks that are currently renters, it'd be an opportunity for them to purchase their property when it goes up for sale. I would like to make a motion to deny the variance on the parking. I think we've heard a lot of tonight, they're, they're very serious about just how that block is very unique about a lot of the snow issues that happen.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So that's a motion and a second to deny item B, variance to reduce the minimum parking Commissioner Schrader, I would ask that you just quickly walk through the findings, even though we heard quite a bit about it.
Sure, so the, I, I thought the, the staff argument was very well put together, but I would just say that that, it's, still doesn't really meet the requirement for the, for the variance, that while there is transit around there, I disagree that it does hit the, the minimums of being able to be around at, at noon. And also that it's unique to the property. I mean, I think that it's, there are differences from where you live in Minneapolis. And I think for those of us that live in South Minneapolis, we have just the access to amenities and transit is very, very different. And so I think that that doesn't, really doesn't allow for the variance.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lipke-Pier and then Commissioner Sweetsie.
Yeah, I was kind of on the fence about this one too. Part of me, because much of the testimony focused on the scale of the development, which is actually following the law allowed on the R5. However, the parking seemed so prescriptive in what, where it was allowed to be varied versus where it wasn't, that even though historically we have granted parking variances, it seemed so specific in its requirement of where, where we could and could not vary it under the specific transit incentive, that I am inclined to agree with Commissioner Schrader on this one, which is, which is interesting. It's an interesting dichotomy because if they wait till the 2040 Plan gets, you know, formally adopted and they updated things, the R5 will go away, but the parking requirement will go away too. So it's, it's six to one, half dozen the other, but that's, that's my take on it.
Commissioner Sweetsie.
Mr. President, I'll be voting against the motion to deny the parking variance. Here's why. First of all, I, and I heard the argument raised here, we can't hold against anybody the fact that they're bringing this thing up now and that the comp plan is a thing that's going to be passed in the future. First of all, we don't know exactly when that will be, but we can't just kick something down the cur, you know, down the road until the law changes. There are ordinances that apply to when people make their land use applications and when we have to act on them. Just in the same way that once the new comp plan is here, we can't accuse, we can't hold anything against those people for waiting until then to bring their land use application. We have to treat them all fairly and as they're in front of us when they arrive. With respect to this variance, I find the staff findings, you know, solid, that, that a variance is here. And this commission has voted to eliminate parking, you know, on so many pieces of property. At least this one has some. For those who don't follow the work of this commission regularly, I can tell you that, you know, so many other parts of the city are getting zero parking spots with their apartment buildings. And I can't help but think here, on an R5 street, that's all multiple family dwellings and everything, that this doesn't just have more to do with where it is than anything. And so for me, those are the reasons that I will be voting against the motion to deny the variance.
Commissioner Kogel. Please, quiet in the audience.
Thank you. President Rockwell, I would just say that I will also be voting no. I agree with Commissioner Sweetsie. And we're talking about 13 spaces. I mean, relative to what we've approved on a variety of other projects, the reason of consistency just alone, just regarding many of the other concerns from a more meta level around climate change, it seems unnecessary to, to deny. So I'll be voting no.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? All right, we have a motion to deny the variance to reduce the minimum parking requirement. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
No.
Kogel?
No.
Crowder?
No.
Lipke-Pier?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
No.
It's two to five.
All right, that motion carries. Next up is site plan review.
That doesn't carry. It's two.
Oh, I'm sorry. That does not, that just requires another motion. Thank you, Kimberly. Would anybody like to make the alternate motion? Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'll move approval of item B, the variance to reduce the minimum parking requirement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Kogel?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Lipke-Pier?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
No.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Five to two.
All right. Now we're going to have the site plan review. Anyone like to make a motion on site plan review? Mr. Brown?
I'll move approval of item C, the site plan review with the eight stated conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Schrader?
Yes, I, I won't be supporting this, but I would just add as a friendly amendment, appreciate a kind of an additional condition that they include the fence at the back alley. Give, of course, a minimal to that.
Yes, I'm comfortable adding that condition.
Very good. Any further discussion? Commissioner Crowder?
Just really simply, I think this building can do better fitting into the community. The material, the color, I mean, we saw a project a few hours ago now that had a nice scale to the material design. I think if this project makes it through the process here, that the community really deserves a better looking building. So I challenge you to, to go ahead and do that. I mean, you talked about your core values and I just don't see any of your core values here. I think, I think you can do better.
Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Kogel?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Lipke-Pier?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
No.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six to one.
All right, that concludes item number 12. Our next item is item number 14, zoning code text amendment related to track classes.
Should I just jump right in? All right. So that I can start with just a few people here. Just a recap of...
Can you hold on just a minute? We had a third application to return a variance that had been applied for on the previous item. It had been withdrawn by the applicant, but if we could just do a motion to formally accept the withdrawn application.
All right, well, I will reopen item number 12 and accept an application to withdraw item A. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Sorry, Janal.
That's okay. So two amendments that we have had discussions on. One would be to allow up to three unit buildings in the lower density districts and the second one to limit lot combinations in those lower density districts. The idea, the direction that we've been given again is to allow those units within the same building scale and size as a single-family dwelling and also looking at any related development standards. And then the idea with the lot combinations limits would be to maintain that small-scale size of development as well. This is again coming from policies from the 2040 Plan, particularly Policy One regarding access to policy, increase in the supply of housing and its diversity of location. So the idea is to allow more housing options for significant population growth that's expected, as well as people already living here. And again, this policy supports several goals of the plans, including eliminating disparities, creating more jobs in residence, and affordable housing and accessible housing, as well as Oops, I think I jumped ahead a little bit. Since I have this up already. So one thing we had gotten feedback on was when these amendments are implemented, to come back and define how our measuring results and give some updated information. So long-range planning is going to be doing some of this work. They're not here tonight, but they asked me to just pass on this information. They're going to be doing some ongoing measurement and evaluation on all the comprehensive plan goals. And they'll be focusing on key policies, including this one, of course. They're still working through the details. They'll have dashboards on the Minneapolis 2040 Plan that you can follow. And they have been directed to provide these updates to the planning commission and city council. To begin with, these might be broader, this might be broader information. So Development Services is also going to be looking at this, providing more detailed information. But we're still in the process of creating that evaluation framework. So again, we plan to be coming back to you at committee of the whole and when we have more of those details figured out. And this is what I thought the next slide was. Getting back into the amendment details, just as a recap, currently in those lower-density districts, duplexes and triplexes aren't allowed in all of them. Right now, triplexes are first allowed in R3 district. So the proposed amendment would be allowing single, two, or three families... be allowing single, two, or three family dwellings in the R1 to R2B districts. And again, ADUs are only allowed accessory to single or two family dwellings. And with the direction to maintain that small scale building size and environment, duplexes and triplexes would be subject to the same building bulk requirements as a single family dwelling. Also, other development standards include lot size requirements, and lot coverage, and purview surface and yard requirements. With the limiting lot combinations, adding a maximum lot size requirement is a new thing. So here, we just reiterated in each district where it would apply, this would be applying to single to three family dwellings, and a maximum variance of 30% would apply. And if you're looking at the built form guidance, you can see these, this would apply mainly in interior one, and some interior two and interior three areas as well. So zoning map on the left, built form on the right. Maybe I'll take a break here. This is, that was just the recap, and I was also going to get into the changes that have happened to the text amendments since we last saw it, just a few weeks ago. So any questions at the moment? Okay, let's keep going. So, list of changes that were made, just some revisions, starting with the enclosed parking requirement for new dwellings that we had discussed several times before. Initially, we came in with a proposal to require a minimum of 200 square feet for each a single two or three family dwelling, and then we got some feedback, maybe split it up, make it a little more flexible, and then we said, no, it should really be able to accommodate at least one vehicle, even though we're not going to technically require a garage, it could be used as a garage. So we did go back to that. So I think there's a lot of opinions on which way you could go, but the staff recommendation landed on requiring 200 square feet for each of those units, or housing types. We also updated some things in their tree requirements, first being where we have site plan review points for trees. We added in a minimum caliper requirement of two and a half inches. Again, as we mentioned previously, the idea is to prevent planting an unreasonable number of stick-like trees, that are just, there's just too many of them, and they're really not meeting the intent. This would apply to both existing and new trees, so we went with a little higher number. When looking at the new tree requirement for any newly constructed dwelling, we decided to bring that down just a little bit, based on some feedback that we got from the Minneapolis Parks and Recreation staff. So we decided to go with two inches for just general trees, but if you have trunk specimen, we just did a little bit to .75 inches. The idea is that a smaller tree is going to reestablish quicker, their roots will grow faster, and then they can commonly surpass the growth of a tree that was larger when it was planted, and within a couple of growing seasons. So we, yeah, we decided to go with a little bit, a little bit lower caliper for those reasons. And actually, after I had written, the staff report had been completed, I got a little more information, a little more feedback, and they did say that if you go even smaller, say an inch and a half in caliper, that's more in line with tree warranty periods offered by installers, and it can accommodate a few, like, more options for tree growth. So just a little more information to consider. Next, we made a revision to the reduced front yard requirement. First was just to be consistent with how we measure the increased front yard requirement setback. So basically, now it would be the same if you're measuring reduced or increased. So that was just a consistency change. The second was that we removed some text that pertained to where, what you include or don't include, and we struck the language that said, including enclosed structures that are unconditioned. So that was getting at mainly enclosed porches that are not integrated into the house. But based on additional feedback that we received, it was determined that it is pretty difficult to administer that. Someone can come in for a building permit to convert those porches at any time, and it's just an over the counter permit, and make them fully habitable. So we eliminated that, but then specified that attached garages would still be exempt, or not included, and that reduced setback requirement. So the example below shows where you might have an attached garage that might skew those results a little bit. There may still be practical difficulties, and you may be able to meet variance findings, so if the situation right, a variance could still be requested. Another change that we made was the maximum lot area requirement for a cluster development. So as we're evaluating how we're doing the maximum lot area requirements, we realized that if you have a smaller cluster development, let's say with only one principal dwelling or a structure, or four or less units, you might have a maximum lot area requirement that's less than your minimum lot area requirement, and that just doesn't work. So have an R1A example here, this couldn't be built with the original maximum lot area requirements we had proposed. So we did change it to as approved by the conditionings permit, and it's included as a development standard under the rest of the development standards with cluster development. So it can be varied, but it does still allow the planning commission the opportunity to evaluate if what they're proposing for a lot area is consistent with the comprehensive plan policy guidance, as well as what the surrounding context is. Then the last change was related to the building bulk tables and the lot dimension tables. We realized that they are attached to the wrong sections, and in order to fix that, we had to completely eliminate the whole table and then show them as new text under the correct section of the ordinance. So that affects the tables in R1 to R2B, so it looks like there's a lot of new text, but there really wasn't. And we just recapped in the staff report what was actually proposed to change in those tables. So that covers the changes since the last time we met. Any questions?
So getting back to the storage changes, is the intent to require a concrete floor, enough head height? We were kind of talking about this at Cow, and one of the points I brought up as well, we want something of quality that's going to last. If we don't call it a garage, how are we going to assure that we have something that's built on a concrete floor that has certain head height?
And that was discussed. Allowing it to be a little more flexible was the way we determined to go. The idea is to provide storage, but without actually building out a full garage necessarily. And so a shed might not have a concrete floor, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's a dirt floor. So it was determined that defining those minimum specifications might limit flexibility.
Other questions of staff? Thank you, Janelle.
Thanks.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Anybody who's here to testify? Yes, come on forward, state your name and address for the record.
Bruce Brenner, 2419 West 22nd Street. My only question is, have you removed the asterisks where if, within 350 feet, if the average lot is above 50%?
Address the mics, then, and then, Janelle.
I'm sorry?
Address the mics, so that we can all hear you as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have you removed the asterisks where if a lot is 50% larger than the minimum, then the lot can't be split? Is essentially my question. So in R1A, there's lots of big lots, but you can't split them because lots around them are, they average 10,000 square feet.
Janelle, feel free to come on up.
What Mr. Brenner is referring to is what we call the large lot provision, where the average of the surrounding lots are larger than the minimum, or at least 150% of the minimum required. And then a new minimum requirement takes effect based on that average. So no, that has not been eliminated. That might be something that we look at again in the future, but for this amendment, it's going to stay in, as proposed.
Very good, thank you. Has anybody else wished to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have a text amendment for us. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Brown?
I'll go ahead and move approval of item A, the text amendment for various sections of Title 20.
We have a motion to approve, to recommend the text amendment and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Lupin?
Sorry, everyone. I actually am in favor of almost everything Janelle discussed, and actually all the hard work she's done, except of course the triplexing, so I'm just going to get this over with. It'll come as no surprise that I intend to vote against the proposed zoning code text amendment related to triplexes, because it lacks any safeguards. It undermines eight of the 15 stated goals of the comp plan, and therefore I find it inconsistent with the Minneapolis 2040 plan and cannot support it. I know that my opinion on the matter is not a very popular one here, and that what I'm about to say will likely fall on deaf ears, but as the only person here who's likely from North Minneapolis, I'm going to say it. The Minneapolis 2040 Comprehensive Plan states, and I quote, "The top goal for Minneapolis 2040 is in 2040, Minneapolis will have significantly reduced economic housing, safety, and health disparities among people of color and indigenous peoples compared with white people." Our top goal was reducing disparities. At least 92 pages of our approximately 300-page comp plan mention equity-related housing issues, and this is notable. Nearly a third of our comp plan was dedicated to this cause. Triplexes or words implying the creation thereof occur on four of these pages. That's only a little over 1%. I've already gone into detail numerous times on how I'm not only not opposed to density, it's a planning tool that can be used to concentrate development to achieve certain goals, and my decade-long record on the topic speaks for itself. I'm not opposed to affordability, I'm not opposed to triplexes, I'm not a NIMBY, and I just want to be clear, I strongly support the goals of the 2040 plan. I did when it was being implemented, and I do now. I feel as though they are noble and worthy goals, and that the Long Range Planning Department was right to focus on them as a foundation for how our city needs to grow. I won't go into the data again on how the lack of safeguards will lead to further inequities, will increase disparities, will further deny homeownership, which lest people get concerned about it, I have nothing against renters, but I mention it as it's highlighted in the comp plan as a key factor in the denial of generational wealth for families of color and specific policies made to increase the quantities of it. So if you're a fan of 2040, guess what, you've supported increasing homeownership. Our 2040 plan had policies that spoke about increasing housing choice and supply, and while I don't doubt that this will increase supply because it's simple math, you take an existing single-family house and divide it into three, I would argue that it's a simplistic take on the situation, because it increases the quantity of units, but neglects technology impact this will have on the supply of housing for families, thereby diminishing choice and supply. The comp plan mentions that in the engagement phase, people repeatedly voiced their concerns about the displacement of families due to the lack of affordable options for families, and this is mentioned at least as often as triplexes were, coincidentally enough. We see this reality all the time in this commission. We approved the construction of 7,563 new dwellings in its last year alone, and think of how few were actually sized to house a family. There's not many. Without any safeguards, we are incentivizing investors to further diminish the supply of housing for families in my community and ones like it, because we will literally be encouraging investors to convert family-sized houses into efficiency units which are not suitable for families, and a reminder, over 50% of the residents of North Minneapolis are under the age of 18. When we exacerbate problems that if 50% of a community is already struggling with it, we're not achieving equity. And yet here we are, after adopting a plan whose foundations relied upon achieving equity and diminishing disparities, with our very first zoning code text amendment to be adopted under the new comp plan, and it doesn't just ignore this mandate, it actually undermines and furthers those inequities in the very communities that we claim to care most about addressing finally. I've been told that the barriers to Kypec's conversion are likely to make conversion unlikely, but this has been debunked. I've been told by President, Council President Bender, that this is something that the more desirable neighborhoods, like the ones in Ward 10, 11, and others, need in order to accommodate growth, and that might be true. I really don't take issue with them wanting to find new ways to accommodate that growth. I only take issue with how this one-size-fits-all approach will play out in communities like mine. Again, not an issue with triplexes, just an issue with the lack of safeguards to prevent exploitation. When it comes to inequities and racial disparities related to housing and finance, despite narrowing racial disparities in areas such as education and employment in our country, the gap in net worth remains just as large as it was almost three decades ago, because the root cause of all this, the redlining, the racial covenants, the shady contract for deed practices, the resultant denial of opportunity to build generational wealth, all of this is rooted in real estate exploitation. There was a study done about this topic in Chicago, and I just want to highlight a paragraph of this article, actually that was, that were written by Mark Whitehouse. He said, "The predation didn't end in the 1960s, it evolved. There was FHA scandal of the 1970s in which indiscriminate federal lending and outright corruption enabled speculators to sell inner-city homes to blacks at inflated prices, resulting in widespread foreclosures. There was a subprime boom of the 2000s in which blacks were steered into inappropriately expensive loans and enriched a whole ecosystem of mortgage industry professionals, but often left borrowers with nothing but an eviction note and bad credit history. In the wake of this subprime bust, investors, including private equity firms, have again targeted the same neighborhoods," this is recent, "buying up houses on the cheap and running them back to blacks and other minority tenants, sometimes under contracts very similar to those in 1960s. And the real estate agents and investors who profited were almost exclusively white, so this represents a direct transfer of wealth from one race to another. And I'm saying this zoning code text amendment, if adopted without any safeguards, will continue to accelerate that trend. As we now see the cash flow potential of renting three units versus the previous one unit, we will see capital flight, continued wealth transfer, increased disparities, and increased displacement of families. The concept that increased density will somehow allow for complete neighborhoods in the comp plan calls for becomes a myth in communities like mine, as those investors are predominantly entities located outside of our area. So we do not end up with those dollars circulating around in the areas that are needed to sustain local business. And when we approved the Minneapolis 2040 plan last December, we promised, the residents of Minneapolis, that this was a vision document, and that we would use the goals of the comp plan to write the actual policy. We promised them that we would, and I quote, "pursue innovative housing strategies and data-driven decisions to maximize the creation and preservation of affordable housing, use data and research to guide and evaluate housing priorities, policies, and programs." And on that note, despite repeated requests for data supporting the economic argument that Long Range Planning has asserted related to this policy and affordability, no answer's been forthcoming regarding the actual aspirational goal quantitatively listed, and thereby the metrics to which we can gauge success to our proposed change in our zoning code. We publicly promised that it would be data-driven, so where is the data? We promised to minimize the involuntary displacement of people of color, indigenous people, and vulnerable populations such as low-income households, the elderly, people with disabilities from their community as the city grows and changes. And we promised this, and now I've been told a zoning ordinance is not the proper form to address these issues, and it was even printed in the staff report, so that's verbatim. I find this somewhat ironic, since the comp plan, a zoning document, is focused quite heavily on these issues, and these are problems which will be specifically caused by the zoning ordinance we're considering here tonight. We are on the cusp of approving a zoning code text amendment, which is currently written, once again prioritizes the have lots at the expense of the have nots. We cannot enact city policy in a vacuum. We are voting on something that will have a ripple effect throughout our city manifested in so many grave ways that we spent nearly a third of our comp plan talking about it, and I will not be complicit in this. If we create a problem through the use of the zoning ordinances that directly undermines the goals of our very own planning department-driven comprehensive plan for the city, then by God, we should have some sort of safeguard in place to find a solution concurrently with it, whether in zoning or otherwise. I see this zoning code amendment moving forward, and I see nothing on the horizon that will prevent the exploitation and damage that is coming as a result. And while I understand the consequences of denying this amendment today, that it would create a situation where the zoning code isn't in sync with the comp plan, it's going to take 18 months to implement all the zoning code changes for the comp plan, so we're going to be out of sync regardless. It seems to me that if we really wanted to honor what we stated was our number one goal of the comp plan, we should at least get the inaugural one right. Pushing this through and letting some other arm of our municipal government deal with the aftermath at some point in the future is not acceptable. As our comp plan is repeatedly emphasized, it's harder to fix the damage caused by exploitation of poor communities and people of color than if we had just prevented it from happening in the first place. Zoning code text amendment might benefit certain wards and neighborhoods in Minneapolis, it's true, but it will also be a catalyst to great harm in neighborhoods like Jordan, Hawthorne, Falwell, Powderhorn, and others, and therefore I cannot support it, because it is not consistent with the goals of the Minneapolis 2040 plan. And if we actually care about those supposed goals, you shouldn't support it either. Otherwise, we shouldn't have approved a comp plan and promoted it as having anything to do with equity. To uphold anything less is to undermine the very promises we made to the citizens of Minneapolis about why we approved the plan in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other, is there any other discussion on the item before us? Seeing none, I'll, I'll not just briefly, you know, I, I will, you know, philosophically support this, and I do think that it is part of a broader package that the city is putting forward, you know. We've increased the minimum wage, which is fantastic, and there are renter protection bills that have come forward and passed recently, and so I think that from an equity standpoint, this isn't something that should be seen in a vacuum, and it is something that we on this dais don't have all the tools to address this, and I think that's frustrating, certainly to me. I would like to be able to make all the change, but, but I can't. And the city council is doing a great job on some of these issues. We need our other jurisdictions to be doing, pulling their weight as well. And these are our big, complex, national issues, as well as local issues, so. With that, seeing no other comments, clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Colquitt?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lepke-Pier?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Six to one.
With that, the motion carries. That concludes our business at tonight's...
We have one additional. I only moved a second text amendment. And I can just go ahead and move approval of item B, the text amendment. Excuse me, I'll move approval of item B, the text amendment, amending Title 22.
Thank you for that save. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Colquitt?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lepke-Pier?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye. Seven zero.
With that, we have concluded our business for the evening, unless there are any staff updates.
There were two items from your last meeting that received appeals that will be going to the October 17th Zoning and Planning Committee meeting. That was the Costco conditional use permit for adding the gas station and the parking variance at the Center for the Performing Arts. So, those will be heard on Thursday, October 17th. That's ENP.
Very good. Thank you very much, and with that, meeting is adjourned.